Thanks, guys.
Is there a reverb thing? It's like mute their yourself for this thing. I forget which one.
Okay, hang on a second.
You guys are muted.
Okay. Called the meeting to order and had the pledge of allegiance. We'll now move to public comment. General public comment is designated for discussion only. Public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on a matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there anybody that would like to provide public comment? Come on up. Please identify yourself.
My name is Deborah Gink. I just handed you the Declaration of Independence and a picture of a gentleman in mask. There was just a couple of concerns I had last week. There was a mask mandate issued by the governor for all schools to be back in masks. And the mask, the picture I gave you is a gentleman who was spray painting with the same mask that the hospitals and all the public places make you wear. And if you can see, his face is covered with paint around his nose, his lips, everywhere. And a paint particle is a whole bunch bigger than COVID. So my question, I mean, we stood out and protest the mask mandate. The superintendent wasn't going to enforce it now, but what's going to happen when the governor tries to put his finger and force the issue? What are we going to do as a community? Are we going to continue to go with the tyrannical government? Are we going to stand with we, the people, and come together on this? Because we all know these masks don't work. We know it. And it's control. They're trying to force us to follow their lead, and we need to stop. I mean, the next mandate we're going to have is the children's. They're going to want them jabbed before they can go to school. What are we going to do? Are we going to stand there and let them jab these children when we know, we know that the vaccine does not protect you at all? You can still catch it, and you can still give it to people, even if you have the vaccine. We have, where is it? Come on. What did I do with it? Oh, it's right here. On the VAERS data, this is all vaccine people. We have 800,000 adverse events. That means 800,000 people have had some kind of disability because of the vaccine. Doctors' visits, there's 127,000. Hospitalizations, 83,000. Urgent care, 92,000. Disabled, 26,000 people are disabled because of this vaccine. We have Bell's palsy, 10,000. We have myocarditis for younger kids, 10,000. Males are the ones that get this. We have heart attacks. Those are on the rise. Right now, they're at 8,000. Miscarriages from this vaccine to pregnant women. 26,000 women have lost babies. And now, at full-term pregnancies, they're losing the babies as they're being born. Deaths, 17,000 people have died from this. And these governments know they're not working. They know, I mean, Ron Johnson was just at one of the Senate hearings talking about this. We have got to stand up and tell these governments, no, we cannot continue to put our people at risk. We've got to stop. We have to stand, make a stand. Our community needs to stand together and tell them, no more. Stop taking their money. Stop taking the COVID stuff. We need to stand together. And at the end of the VAERS, it says 100% safe and effective. Yeah, we're not safe and effective. We can't keep doing this, guys. We have to put our foot down. We can't let these governors tell us that we have to take these shots. The kids are next. My God, I can't let my grandchildren take these vaccines. It'll kill my grandson. It will kill him. He's got a heart condition, and if they force him to take it, he will die. I'm begging you guys to please stop with the governor. He's going to kill your kids, your grandchildren, your spouses. If it hasn't happened to you yet, don't wait until it does before you wake up and say, no more. We got to stop. And one other thing, if you look back in history, back in 2001, they had an event called Dark Winter. You know how President Biden keeps talking about the Dark Winter? Back in 2001, it was a program about the pandemic. And they did a bunch of tests with the public on this. That was the Dark Winter. That's what he keeps talking about. And then you have the 201 event that happened in Davos. There again, they were talking about this, this event, the pandemic that we're in now. It's not a pandemic. It was planned. And Johns Hopkins, this is one thing that really bothers me the most, is Dr. Stringham always talks about Johns Hopkins. Johns Hopkins, Bill Gates, and many others are all in bed with each other. They're all involved. They all have stock in this vaccine. Johns Hopkins was in with the Dark Winter. Johns Hopkins was in the 2001 event. They are all in it to make money. That is why this is being pushed. We can't keep letting these people do this to us because they want to make money and kill us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comment? Public comment? Please identify yourself.
Yes. Hi, my name is Lindsay Jimenez. Thank you, guys, for being here today. Can I really have anything? I think we've all, like, addressed the facts of feeding this over and over again. My thing is, is how do we be part of the solution? How do we get this board? How do we get the hospital board? How do we get the health board to make a difference? I mean, can we make a decision? Can we get on the health board agenda? There's got to be something that's changing. I mean, you've got Battle Mountain providing a COVID clinic, and they're actively doing all they can to save every person that comes through that clinic. I do not see that happening here. We are losing a person a day, basically. Do I think that it's all 100% COVID? No, I do not. Do I think people are getting really sick? I absolutely do, but I think that the procedure and protocol that's happening in this hospital is one that was chosen to not be super successful. And there are many other options on that paper that are right under the one that's being used that are also available. They've been approved since July 2021. So how do we, you know, every time we come to a board meeting, we're told that we're not at the right board. How do we create? I mean, to me, it makes sense, right? You have a hospital board, and you have your health board, which is Stringham, and those are the two entities that have complete control right now, it seems to me. So how do we, you know, be the difference? How do we have the protocols at the end of the testing site? I mean, I see that testing line every week. Every week, you have a systematic and systematic people, but, you know, you're keeping our kids at home. I work with a gal that's had her kids put in home three times. That's over 30 days. We have jobs that do not provide if you're not there to provide the service, correct? This just can't keep going on. We're another six weeks out of this, and we've killed another 34 people. Well, not 34 people, but we have an active 35 gone, supposedly from COVID, yet we are losing people from mental health and all the other options that are out there that people have been dying of because they're dealing with this. I mean, you guys tell me, how do I get, how do I get this to change? I mean, is it COVID funding? Are we more concerned with the funding that we can't take care of our community locally? I mean, our kids are at, you know, they're the ones that are being punished for this. You have people that don't know what to do with themselves. How do we be the difference? Humboldt County is a great county. Where do we go? Where do we, the people, go to make a difference if we can't get any of our boards to try to make the difference with us? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Hearing none. We're going to move on then to approval of minutes. Looks like we have about five sets of minutes here to approve. Discussion and action on the correction approval of minutes for discussion and action on correction approval of minutes for, this would be October 18th, 2021. Is there any addition or corrections to the minutes for October 18th, 2021?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for October 18th, 2021, as presented.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously, takes us to October 25th, 2021. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner French, I would move that we accept the minutes as presented for October 25th, 2021.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next are for June 5th, 2017. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? And if not, is there a motion to accept?
Yes, Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the minutes, approve the minutes for June 5th, 2017, as presented.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstained.
Abstained.
The record shows that Commissioner Hill and Haas abstain. Motion passes. Next one would be September 15th, 2021. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for...
September 15th.
December.
September.
Wait a minute. Got a different thing here.
I'm on one last here.
Okay, now I've got it. For September 15th, 2021, as presented.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next would be for November 7th, 2017. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Mr. Chair, it's January 17.
Oh.
That's the joint meeting. Okay.
I see it now. Okay, that's January 17, 2017. Is there any corrections or addition to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner French, I would move that we approve the minutes for the joint meeting of January 17th, 2017, as presented.
Okay. Motion is on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstained.
Abstained.
Show that Commissioners Haas and Hill abstain. Motion passes. Okay, next we have the approval of expenditure for Humboldt County for October 18th, 2021 through November 8th, 2021. Those expenditures have been around. We've all seen them. Is there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the expenditures?
Motion to approve the expenditures from October 18th, 2021 through November 8th, 2021, as presented.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. This brings us to employee of the quarter for 2021. Dave, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Mindiola, for the record. So this quarter's employee of the quarter is Gabby Liel, administrative clerk from the sheriff's office. Just a couple of comments. Gabby's attitude is upbeat, and she demonstrates a high level of professionalism while serving the customers that visit the sheriff's office. She fosters strong working relationships with other administrative clerks and deputies. Gabby demonstrates a high level of commitment by being on time to work, seeking direction where needed, and takes, she takes her time to thoroughly complete her task. Gabby is also eager to help with community outreach projects and is always full of fresh ideas. Under work performance, or excuse me, under interpersonal skills, Gabby relates well with other employees. She seems to have a strong sense of the office climate and finds ways to compliment team members, giving them a brightness in the day. As you can all imagine, that is an excellent skill to possess when our deputies are faced with so many daily trials and tribulations during their regular course of duties. Under work performance, Gabby's work is second to none. She is meticulous in her details and takes special precautions to make sure her work is as close to perfect as it can get. She is always a self-starter, and her level of work output reduces a backlog of work. We regularly receive comments on her behalf from other command staff and Sheriff Allen. Under personal traits, Gabby demonstrates genuine care, compassion, and understanding with all of the customers who come to our agency for the difficult things. It is refreshing to work with a team member that is humble, honest, and hardworking, and as thoughtful as Gabby. Also, we cannot overlook her impeccable sense of style. Gabby's workplace is tidy, organized, and always spotless. So our employee of the quarter, Gabby Liel, from the sheriff's office, and I think she's back here, so come on up.
Gabby, on behalf of the commission, I want to say once again, thank you very much for the work you do for the county and for citizens of the county. Okay. Seven is approval of professional services. Proposal from Stantec Consulting for lithium Nevada air pollution, water, and reclamation permits from NDEP. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of two proposals for Stantec Consulting Services to prepare technical comments pertaining to Nevada Division Environmental Protection, NDEP Bureau of Mining Regulations, and Reclamation. Notice of opposed actions and NOPA, and a 30-day notice of intent respectively for air pollution control permit, water pollution control permit, reclamation permit for the Thackerpass project. Dantic is proposing two separate proposals not to exceed $4,740 for air pollution, $5,775 for the water pollution control mining reclamation comments, for a total of $10,515. Ending approval by the district attorney's office for discussion and possible action. This is something that I talked to our county administrator about looking into. I think it's, this mine is something that, it's different. We have a lot of mines in Humboldt County, but this one is different. There's, they're going to be using some technologies that have never been used before. They've been done on a very small scale, and they're proposing to put these, this project and these technologies to work in the Quinevere Valley. Now, there's going to be, not just a mining project there, there's also going to be basically a chemical plant there as well that will be trucking in 150 loads of chemical daily. Specifically, most of that will be sulfur, which will be molten sulfur that they will be burning to refine the lithium, produce power, that sort of stuff. So, you know, there's a lot of unknowns here. I think it's important that the county have a third-party review comment, see if there's something that may need to be addressed. It may be additional monitoring, whatever. I don't know what, I'm not going to be writing the comments. I, you know, a professional service like this may see something that might benefit the county. So, yeah, it's relatively spendy, but in the long term, this is a 40-year project. And, you know, there's going to be 50,000 loads of sulfur coming through here yearly that will be offloaded here in Winemucca and transported to Oravata. That's a couple million loads in 40 years, so we want to make sure that, I want to make sure that it's done as safely as possible and that the county has, you know, some standing in this. So I think it's important from my aspect. Any other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Hill. I agree. I don't think any of us on this board are environmental professionals in a lot of these areas. I think it's going to be money well spent for the county to hire a professional, to get a professional third-party opinion on these studies that are being done to protect our citizens and, you know, especially if they're hired by the county. That way, we know that they're, they are truly third-party, and we're getting an unbiased opinion of these studies. So I agree, it is a lot of money, but I think it's a very small amount compared to what this can produce for us, you know, over the next 50 years. So I want it to be as safe and as user-friendly as possible. And we know that we can go to sleep at night knowing that we did everything we can do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I just had a couple of clarification questions. I, did Stantec Consulting Services provide some sort of a proposal to the group out in Oravata? I just, is that somebody that it was recommended to you personally, or?
Commissioner, or administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So Stantec, the referral came from Jeremy Drew. Jeremy's done a lot of work with these guys and knows the kind of work they do. This particular company was also one that bid on the original environmental impact statement with the BLM for the lithium mine. So they have the expertise in that area. They just didn't win the bid, but they've done this for many of mining communities, many of mining entities around northern Nevada and southern Nevada as well.
Yep, I know the name. I've seen them through RCI, actually, in the past, and I just was curious how we got to them. They are actually a great, a great choice from our standpoint. And, you know, $10,000 sounds like a lot of money, but for the kind of work that's going to go into this, these comments, this is really not. This is pretty, this is a buy, to be honest with you.
I doubt there's very many companies with the expertise to do this. That's why Jeremy recommended this company rather than RCI. You know, they knew they couldn't handle it, or it would be better done by someone else.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with all of you, what you've said here. I think it's a superb idea that we have information from a third party, being as we're listening to professional statements supposedly. and we're listening to professional statements supposedly coming from Lithium Nevada. We need a third-party can give us information that they have on it and see if they match.
Right. Yeah, there may not be any recommendations come from this, but at least we'll feel like Commissioner Hill says, we'll sleep better at night knowing that it was reviewed and it was done the best way.
Right. This is Commissioner Hill. The only question that would come to mind is, you know, if Lithium Nevada truly is honest with their studies and believe what's being assessed out there, is this something that they would be willing to pay for?
I'd never thought about it, to be honest with you, or broached them with that, but certainly could. You know, I think probably technically speaking, that's just like any other comments we make when we bring people in. It's really kind of our responsibility.
Right.
So, but I think District Attorney McDonald has something too. I don't know if it's related to this conversation or else.
I wanted to indicate that I think this is a good idea. I generally promote folks, boards to gather more information, make better informed decisions based on that information. And I think this is one of those. It is important for all the reasons that you've indicated as well. The agenda item noted that was subject to the approval of the district attorney's office. Ms. Maddox did review the proposals and we are on board. Recommend approval if that's the appetite of this board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I?
I just could add one. In regards to Commissioner Hill, I think it's better that we don't even ask Lithium to pay for it. I think the citizens feel more comfortable if they know that it isn't paid for by Nevada Lithium.
That was, yeah, Commissioner Hill, that was the second thought I had after I had said that is to truly be an independent study, I think it's better that we brunt this cost and keep them completely out of the communications with, in reference to reviewing these studies.
So. On the other side of that, by the way, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I was going to say as well. But I think also there will be a range of suggestions made in this report. There'll be a long-term, there'll be a roadmap that will allow commissions that are seated after we're long gone that will actually have a set of standards to look to and whatnot. And there is, in terms of untested technology, I think it's important to note that a company like this would give us the opportunity to weigh what the risks versus the benefits are with those untested technologies, because most of them are biochemical. So, anyway, I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Haas, I want to make sure that you're not here, but we're not ignoring you. Did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. This is Commissioner Haas. There's a lawsuit, and part of that lawsuit that I read the other day was having Lithium Nevada and using the same company that the BLM had. And so, in seeing that, I looked up Stantec last night. And now, first of all, I want to say that a third-party is necessary for this. But I also found that Stantec has been doing Lithium Nevada's, Lithium America's stuff down in Tonopah. And I was wondering, I'll ask Mike if that's a conflict of interest, if we're going to end up in a lawsuit, you know, over this one, because we not only asked Dantic, but they've also been doing work for Lithium Nevada and Lithium America. Mike, what do you think?
Mike McDonald, for the record, this is news to me. I was not aware of that information that you shared regarding association with work down in central or southern Nevada. I don't have any information on that.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So, one of the first processes you go through when you engage with a consultant of any type, whether it's legal or in this case, professional services, is they make a determination whether or not they have a conflict of interest. Two days after I engaged with them, they came back and said they do not have one. I was not aware that Lithium America has the site down in southern Nevada. That's a completely different company, as far as I know. But I, again, without looking at that specifically, again, I would just say Stantec would have pulled out and not engaged had they felt like there was a conflict of interest like that. That's just my opinion. But again, I would probably need to just reach out to Lithium America as well or Lithium Nevada to find out whether they've ever done work with them, so we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that either. In fact, I thought that there was no conflict, that they did not work for them. They didn't win, they didn't receive the contract to do the work on the Thacker Pass project. Still, they tried to get that contract, so.
Yeah, they would have done that EIS for Thacker Pass project. This wouldn't have made any sense for us to move forward with. And I would just say, this company goes back quite a ways. RCI has been using them subcontracting with them for years. I dealt with these guys through a lot of the mining process through this county for 20 years. And they do impeccable work. So, I'm not aware of any conflict of interest that would suggest any kind of a problem with regard to the outcome of the analyses we're going to contract for.
Mr. Chair, I mean, one of the things we could do is table this for now. And I can reach out to Dan Heiser, who is the gentleman that I've been dealing with. And I've just sent him a text asking that question. So, if you want table it, see if we can get in touch with Dan, maybe even get him online to comment.
If any, if we can hear from him today, Dave, maybe it'd be something we could put on the Friday's emergency meeting too.
Yeah, it's too late for that because we just published, but.
We did publish.
Yeah, and that would have been a GID, but I think I can get him before we're done here this morning.
Well, the public comment is due, what day is that?
The first one is November 18th, so.
Don't give us a lot of time.
Yeah, we'd have to have a special meeting to do that. But again, I think they can probably hear back from Dan. I'll go have Michelle reach out to him. I've got his cell phone number here. I just didn't want to call him in the middle of the meeting, but I did text him. So, I'll ask her to reach out, see if we can catch him here in the next 30 minutes or so.
Are we going to act on it today?
Sure. We'll just kind of table that and we'll come back to it maybe.
Yes, can't we act on it today with the pending approval of the district attorney's office? That give you time to check in on that?
Yeah, we, subject to ensuring that there isn't this conflict that's been raised. So, I think, I don't have a problem with the board taking action in that fashion, that it'd be subject to confirmation that county manager and DA's office can receive. If we don't hear back during this meeting, we'll proceed that way.
Okay. I do know these types of companies, these types of firms that we're asking to do this work for us are not plentiful and would not be surprised if there was some, at some point, they had talked with Lithium Nevada. You know, there are just not that many of them out there. They do a lot of work, so they do an awful lot of work. We've got to.
Yeah. This is Commissioner Hill. So, I guess just to be clear on Commissioner Haas, I'm not quite sure on the conflict of interest, but just brings to mind, if they do have a current working relationship or a current contract with Lithium Nevada somewhere else, that would really, in my mind, be a conflict to this board if STMPAC is currently engaged with Lithium Nevada in a different capacity, wherever it may be. I would really like to find an answer on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, what about even Lithium America, which is the parent company of Lithium Nevada?
Yeah, that would ring true too. If it truly is tied together, I don't quite understand the full tie, but if there is a tie, then yeah, for sure, that would be a conflict, I would think.
Yeah, we'll check into it. I did get a text. Abel went online. And the company out of southern Nevada is American Lithium Corporation. It's a different company, so.
It's a different process down there too, completely different than what's being proposed.
Yeah, it is. It is a different process.
I would like a direct answer from STMPAC denying any other involvement with them. That way.
That's part of the contract. That's part of the contract proposal.
Okay.
So, should we go ahead and move ahead with it and some district attorney's review?
Yeah, I think that's our safety valve on it. If there is a conflict of interest as determined by the district attorney, then the action is null and void.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah. Okay.
Let's, can we have a motion then to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner French. I would move the approval of two proposals from Stantec Consulting Services, Inc. to prepare technical comments pertaining to the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Mining Regulation and Reclamation, Notice of Proposed Action, and a 30-day notice of intent respectively for the air pollution control permit, water pollution control permit, and a reclamation permit for the Thacker Pass project. This proposal is, it's two separate proposals not to exceed $4,740 for the air pollution permit, $5,775 for the water pollution control and mining reclamation comments, for a total of $10,515. And this is pending the approval of the district attorney's office to determine whether or not conflicts of interest may or may not exist with this company.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, nay.
Record show Commissioner Haas voted nay. Okay, so, number eight is proclamation to declare November 27th, 2021 Small Business Saturday. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to adopt a resolution to proclaim Saturday, November 27th, 2021, Small Business Saturday in Hubble County in an effort to encourage shoppers to support local, independently-owned businesses. Discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read that or do one of you want to read it?
Yeah.
Do you care to read?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Summary is a resolution proclaiming County of Humboldt, Nevada proclamation, Office of the County Commission. Whereas the government of Humboldt County, Nevada celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 61.5% of net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector of the United States, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 52% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas Humboldt County, Nevada supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the Humboldt County Board of Commission, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year adopted this 8th day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mindiola. Now, this is a resolution, new resolution. We have never done this before, right?
This is the first of my knowledge, yes.
We think it's very important in light of all these small businesses have suffered through in the last year and a half or something like that now, that, you know, they're intricate to this community. And their struggle has been real, so.
Yep, it has.
With that, is there a motion to?
Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner French, and I'd be proud to make the motion for the approval of adoption of a resolution proclamation, Saturday, November 27th, 2021, Small Business Saturday in Humboldt County in an effort to encourage shoppers to support local, independently-owned businesses.
Okay, motion is on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item nine. Mr. Mindiola, do you want to tell us what we are with?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So, last night I got a text late from Eric Hall, the local director of operations, and he said he couldn't get, there was two or three people that he wanted to be at the meeting to answer questions. Something came up, they couldn't make it. So, he asked if he could go on the November 22nd meeting to come back with all the key people. And I said that would be fine, so.
Okay, so we'll just table that item until November 22nd. Mr. Austin, I see you're here. I guess you didn't get the word, didn't get the note, huh?
Yeah, I just got that last night, Sam, so sorry about that.
So, we'll table that until the next meeting.
Mine as well.
Thank you. That takes us to approval of the Wild Horse and Borough Land Use document. Discussion, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the County Wild Horse and Borough Management Chapter of the Humboldt County Land Use Management Plan. Discussion and possible action. As you guys know, we've been working on our various plans for our land use, in our land use plans. We've done grazing, water. This is just another chapter in that that Andy Reber has been working with us, both Commissioner, both myself and Commissioner French and County Manager Mindiola. I've been on a number of calls with her, working through the document, to make it what it is. And this is the final draft, right, Dave?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola. So, we were working till late Friday afternoon with Andy to finalize. There were some changes that were made. That's why there was nothing on the agenda. So, I meant to get you a copy of this to look. Most of it was just, there were some formatting issues and we added a few items. So, generally, it was the same one that we sent out on Friday to you. But just, but this would be the final Wild Horse and Borough. The reasoning that this is a timing issue is that the 30-day comment period for the off-range corrals out in Paradise Valley is coming up. And we wanted to be sure that we had that in place, even though we now know that that environmental assessment has already been signed off on and they're beginning that process. So, we, in the meantime, by the way, are trying to contact local residents. And I would make a call out to any local residents. If any of you know a local resident from Paradise Valley who maybe were living back there in, I believe it was 1983, 84, and there was a couple of flood seasons where this land that they want to put this horse corral on was underwater, has been on several occasions over the past 15, 20 years. So, in any case, that's why it's important that we get this in place before they continue. um, in, in any case, uh, that's why it's important that we get this in place before they continue to go through this EA process.
Yep. Mr. French, do you want to add anything?
I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm pleased with it. I think, uh, to go to, uh, County Manager's, uh, comments, uh, the, the changes we made on Friday were not substantive changes. They were just, they were more or less cleanup language, just cleanup, a couple of errors and, and some acronyms and a few things like that, but there wasn't anything. We didn't change anything in terms of the substance of the document. Um, I'm, I'm pleased with it. I, it's been a lot of work that's gone into it, and I think it sets us on a, a good trajectory with, with regard to Department of Interior in terms of how manage, how we manage horses in the future, and whether or not horse management is going to involve management of other uses on the public land right alongside it. And, uh, and I, I've always thought that was a, a consideration that was, that was, uh, didn't set well with me. Um, you know, to, to cut AUNs first before you cut, you know, knock back to AML is, um, was not, wasn't the intent of the Wild Horse and Borough Act. So, anyway, I think it does that. It, it meets those requirements, and I'm, I'm pleased with it the way it reads.
Any other questions from the rest of commissioners? Comments on it? Not, then I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adopt.
Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner French, I would move the approval of the Wild Horse and Borough, uh, Management Chapter of the Humboldt County Land Use Plan, um, as presented.
Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Passed unanimously.
That would have been good.
Okay, um, Comptroller Financial Report. Humboldt County, Humboldt County Comptroller Gina Rackley will provide an overview of current conditions with respect to Humboldt County revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, July first, twenty twenty-one through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, including possible impacts of COVID-nineteenth response in the county, and an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of two thousand twenty-one, for information only. Gina, do we have you online?
Um, yeah, I'm here in my office. Hopefully, I'm sharing my screen, and you can see the CTX report from August on your displays.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. So we just did receive August's CTX report. We did have, um, another million dollar month of that, a little over eight-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand goes to the county, and the remainder goes to the fire protection districts. In this, though, we are down five point six percent compared to August of twenty twenty, so our sales are down about three million dollars. The good news is mining is up three-hundred-and-sixty-nine percent, so that is good. Utilities are up. Special trade contractors, though, are down. Uh, down here on the bottom midsection, all of our manufacturing components seem to be pretty steady and, and up strong, which is good. But you'll see, I asterisked the bottom two here. Uh, merchant wholesalers of both durable and non-durable goods are down pretty significant, so that's having a pretty major impact there. Uh, we've got motor vehicle parts and dealers still down eleven point eight percent. As we've discussed, a lot of that's just the supply and demand on those, uh, items. Gas, gasoline stations are up, general merchandise stores are up, but look here, non-store retailers, we are down a lot, and this is, I think, because people are able to, are feeling more confident about getting out and shopping. So last year we were at a little over seven million, and this year we're at about two point two million. And then lastly, I just want to talk about our restaurants. They continue to recover pretty strongly, um, up to twenty point two percent, going from two point seven to three point three million. So CTX is staying pretty steady. Next, I thought, because we hadn't talked about this in a long time, where we're at on that cost reduction, um, the Budget Expense Review Committee that we formed. So just as a reminder, and kind of as an update for our two new commissioners, we had set twelve million dollars in our general fund balance to kind of be where that threshold needs to be, where we start implementing those sustainable practices. And so at the top of the screen here, you'll see we're staying right at about seventeen million, although we have, our, our general fund balance has reduced from July one through November by a little over five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. But just as a reminder, CTX is, does have that two-month lag, so we, we've always got that kind of hanging out there until after the end of the fiscal year. Uh, next, I just wanted to give you an update. We have received the room tax revenue report from Liz, and we are seeing a very strong September. You'll see up here, you can see in our Septembers where, uh, they collected three-hundred-and-seven thousand in, in room tax. Of that two percent, as you know, goes to the indoor vents complex fund, so that is good. I think I can quit sharing now. See? Um, other than that, I think the only other thing that I wanted to mention was that with our ARPA committee, our weekly ARPA meetings, uh, we did meet the city group and our group. We met with some members of the community that were concerned with our ARPA plan. And so we had a, a good, long meeting. I think that all parties got to kind of, you know, explain what, what came about to get to that plan. I think there was some confusion, and I know that there's some people hopefully on this call, but this might help them as well. But the big thing here is that that plan covers twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four, and if the expenditures are in place at twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. So some of that confusion was on timing. And then, um, on my part, I probably should not have listed Dr. Stringham and Nicole individually, but actually I should have put their role in, um, ARPA and our recovery from that, because it doesn't really matter which person is serving as our public health doctor or our public information officer or who is putting that news out. That's that expense for that category. So I think that led to a little bit of confusion, and hopefully our meeting cleared things up. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions? You're welcome.
Any questions for Gina?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one general question. Gina, I was, you mentioned there was, I believe, about an eighty percent uh, reduction in the non-retail or, you know, the online, uh, activity from last year. Um, is it just, just your thought that, um, we offset that reduction with shopping that has occurred locally and, and or has there been a substitution of those, uh, on the part of the consumers for the, uh, that would make up that, that downturn?
Probably a little bit of both, because, you know, our general merchandise, general merchandise stores were up nineteen point two percent. So, I mean, we did see an increase there. I think more people are, you know, shopping locally or shopping in person, whether it be here or now feeling more confident about traveling to Reno. But, um, you, you know, I think a little bit of a shift is happening.
It didn't look like, just doing the math real quick in my head, didn't look like it was a one-to-one shift, but it's, uh, as you pointed out, it's probably some of the activity that went on down in Reno as well, so, thank you.
You, you're welcome. You're correct. That's not a one-to-one shift.
You know, I, I think we'd be, be doing even better. I, I think the expendable, expendable income is there, but the ability to, uh, receive some services is being impacted by, well, not being able to get the, the, the ships on shore. I know I, I'm looking for a, a wheel, wheel for a side-by-side, and it's somewhere on a ship out in the ocean somewhere right now. And same with vehicles, um, you know, the, they're having trouble with the chips, getting them going. So I think our economy is strong and continues to be strong, and spending in, in, uh, spendable income is, is good. We just need to, uh, be able to get the goods we want. So thank you, Gina. All right, so it takes us, if there's no other questions for Gina, we'll move on to item thirteen. Assessor Resolution directing the County Assessor to take certain actions regarding the secured tax rule. Possible action results of assessor's appeal to the State Board of Equalization. This is for men, informational only. A is consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a resolution requiring the Humboldt County Assessor to prepare a list of all taxpayers on the secured tax rule in the county and the total evaluation of property on which they severally pay taxes, and directing the assessor to publish such list and evaluations on or before January first, two thousand twenty-two. On the Humboldt County website, posting information in various locations throughout Humboldt County, and to otherwise comply with NRS Chapter three sixty-one point three hundred. Uh, this is for discussion and possible action. Morning, Andy. I'll let you go ahead.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Um, morning, Commissioners. This, uh, Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor, for the record. Uh, every year in my calendar, I just have a, a reminder to, to send to you guys. It's more your guys' deal to direct me. Um, but I just wanted to throw the reminder out there, and it got put under my, um, item, which is fine, so, um, you guys, I don't really have much comment other than please allow me to do my job, like, or tell me to do my job, I guess.
And I think it's our job to do this, so.
Yeah.
We're going to do our, we, this is something that we have to do by NRS, so.
Yeah.
Is there any other, any questions on this, particularly from the new Commissioners? If not, um, is there, is there a motion to do this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to direct the assessor to publish, um, list evaluations on before January first, two thousand twenty-two on the Humboldt County website. Post the information in various locations throughout Humboldt County and to otherwise comply with NRS Chapter three six one dot three zero zero.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So is there? Item B, which is Humboldt County Assessor Andy Heiser will update the board on the appeal filed by the assessor with the State Board of Equalization, SOBE, regarding property owner, Nevada Gold Mines, secured rule twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, and supplemental rule twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, heard by the, uh, SBOE on October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. This is for informational only. Andy, want to fill us in on, on that whole deal?
Sure. Good morning again. Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor, for the record. So, um, last, prior to January fifteenth, the last year, I filed an appeal against Nevada Gold. Um, just looking at previous years, I didn't feel like what they had submitted was sufficient to, to previous years. Um, we don't do anything with the mining. It comes directly from Department of Taxation, and they just present us values that we bill. But, but we also have to pay attention to that stuff, and, and Colleen and I had a discussion and felt this isn't right, so we, we filed an appeal. I would like to thank Nevada Gold Mine and Department of Taxation, um, because they put a lot of work into this. Um, you, I don't know if you guys truly understand, and I don't either, sometimes supplemental and secured and unsecured and all this. So basically what it is, is the supplemental is everything new that they added for the previous year, and then that rolls to the secured the following year. So, um, supplemental value was, it, it was fourteen million that they first presented, um, with the readjustment, and it ended up being sixty-three million in taxable value, and then the secured added about ten million. So with, but all of that being said, um, we, we're going to wind up with additional six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars in, in tax revenue between the two bills. So one will be for the twenty twenty-one year, and that's going to be, um, uh, Treasurer Luckenberry and Comptroller Rackley's, they're going to have to figure out a way to get that into last year, and then, um, we just rebuild for the secured for this year, so, um, it's always a good, good surprise when that happens. So I, and again, I want to thank both those entities for all the work that they did.
Thank you, Andy, for catching it. Um, so is it fixed?
Well, it's billed.
Yeah.
Um, we're, it's a thirty-day payment. Um, we split it into two payments because it is such a large amount. Um, so we billed it. They have thirty days to pay the first installment, and then thirty days after that to pay the second installment. Um, it wa, it ended up being a signed stipulation, so both parties, myself and Nevada Gold, agreed with the value change, so it's not a surprise. They, they know it's coming, and, and we shouldn't have any issues.
Again, when I say it's fixed, I mean, I, yeah, I understand you got it fixed for this year, but going forward, uh, do they know what they did wrong, and so won't do it again?
Okay. I, I hope so. I, I think there was a changeover in a position, which was part of it, um, in their accounting department, and, and it's just, it's hard because they build so many different things, and I, I, it, it was an honest mistake on their end, but, um, it is fixed, and the new gentleman that I was doing with is, was involved with this. They brought him along, which was great, so. Um, but the, the, the best part is it was their community outreach. I'm hearing all this building, and, and I'm looking at the values going, wait, that's not adding up. So, um, it's just even you guys or anybody, if you hear of anything going on with the mines, it's just something to pay attention to, know what's coming down the, down the road.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Andy, for, for paying attention to that stuff. That makes a huge difference to, to stay on top of that stuff and have somebody that's proactive to, to, to make the effort to go, to go back and question those things.
Thank you.
It's, it's good for all of us.
Yeah, well, thank you for that information. There's nothing we have to add on that.
Nope, just information.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Excuse me, Chairman Cherry. This is Comptroller Gina Rackley. If I would like, I would just like to add to that. I really want to commend Andy. I don't think he's giving himself the kudos that he deserves. That's not easy to do, to stand up to, um, something like this, especially being a new to the elected position. And he stayed firm on this, and this is going to make a big difference for Humboldt County, and I just want to commend him for that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We agree. Thank, um, brings us to item fourteen, Treasurer's Office request to designate certain personal property taxes as uncollectible and tax rule adjustments for parcel, parcel number fifteen dash zero three, five nine dash ten for tax year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to request the board to designate the personal property taxes on two accounts as uncollectible per NRS three six one point five six zero seven. The accounts have been delinquent for three years or more, and all attempts to collect have proven unsuccessful. The total tax is being designated as uncollectible is uh, forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Discussion and possible action. Hi, Rona.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm just here to present the, um, two accounts that have been deemed, or are requesting to be deemed uncollectible and personal property. Both of these mobile homes were destroyed, um, at the time that there were the taxes owing. The assessor's office has made multiple attempts to collect. Um, those have been unsuccessful. We've passed the three years that is required by the statute, and, um, there's no property to seize. One was destroyed in a fire. One was destroyed by the mobile home park. Um, so we're just requesting that those be deemed uncollectible. Um, the first one is mobile home account two eight one six that was located at four twenty-two West Haskell Street, number twenty-four. The total amount uncollectible is thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents. And that is the one that was destroyed by fire.
Any questions? If not, um, could I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, um, make a motion to designate the personal property tax for account MH seven in the amount of sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and MH two eight one six in the amount of thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents is uncollectible per NRS three six one dot five six zero seven.
Okay. Motion is on the floor. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item B, consideration, discussion, possible approval of a tax rule adjustment for parcel number fifteen dash zero three, five nine dash ten in the amount of six-hundred-and-nine dollars and ten cents for tax year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Discussion, possible action. Go ahead.
Good morning. Um, this parcel fifteen dash zero three nine five dash one zero is located over here on Malarki Street. It's one of the rentals owned by It's one of the rentals owned by the county. As long as it's rented, the renter has issued that tax bill that they're required to pay. There's no longer a renter in there, and according to county manager, the property is in pretty bad condition, so they won't be renting it again. So what we need to do is bring that back to a completely exempt status, and the renter moved out within that first installment period, so we're just asking to remove the taxes due for the remainder of this fiscal year in the amount of $609.96.
So I want to make sure I understand this. This is county property, but we still collect taxes.
Yes, because somebody rents it. Somebody who's a non-tax-exempt entity rents it, so then they pay the tax.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? If not, is there a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner Franchiett moved that we approve the tax rule adjustment for parcel 15-0359-10 in the amount of $609... $609.10 for tax years 2021-22.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Thank you, Rona.
Thank you. And then, if I may, I just wanted to also commend Assessor Heiser. I know from my past experience, appearing at the state board is not easy, and he just really stayed with us. He knew something wasn't right, even though the Department of Taxation kind of gave him a little pushback. He stuck with it. He stuck with it, and it has really resulted in getting something fixed that could have impacted us for a long time. So I just... I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll pass on that. We'll wait for the public hearing piece. We'll have to come back to that one.
Today?
Yes. Yeah. We're not quite to 10 o'clock yet.
Set it for 10.
Oh, that clock is still on.
Oh, it's on.
It says it's 10:30.
So is my computer.
Yeah, 9:39.
Yeah. Can we take a break?
Sure.
Let's break for five or 10 minutes, and we'll be right back. Do we have any water, Dave?
Yeah. Right there. Water, there's bottles over there. I don't know.
The water's just not there. Okay. You ready? Okay. We're going to call this meeting back to order. We're going to back up a little bit here. We're going to go back to Item 8, which is the item where we had some questions about Stan Tech and any connections they may have had... May have with Lithium Nevada. And I understand that we have a representative, Dan Heiser, who's going to be joining us to answer those questions. Dan, do we have you online?
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Yeah, we had a... The Commission has a... Was asking whether or not you had any connection previously or ongoing with Lithium Nevada in any of the work you're doing. Can you answer that?
To summarize, no. Our... I checked two sources within our company, our database on companies we've done work with, and the answer's no, based on that. And then our mining sector leader based in Reno responded and said no.
Okay. That's a resounding no, then, eh? Sounds like... Is there any... Do any of the Commissioners have anything to ask Mr. Heiser? Would you like to ask him anything?
No, covers... I have none.
Well, that helps. We did approve it contingent on that, that there was no connection, so we appreciate you joining us and clarifying that for sure for us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess that puts it to rest. I lost track. Where were we, Dave?
We can go past the public hearing that's scheduled for 10, since we're early on that.
Yeah, we're to the District Attorney item.
Takes us to 15. Yeah.
Okay. 15. Humboldt County District Attorney's Office Waiver of Attrition. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a request for a waiver of Humboldt County attrition policy for the child support caseworker one position that will become vacant on November 15, 2021. So, Mr. District Attorney, do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, fellow members of the Commission, Madam Clerk, Mike McDonald, Humboldt County DA, for the record. As indicated in the agenda item, have a child support caseworker, and that position will be vacant on November 15 or a week from today. The makeup of the Child Support Enforcement Division of the DA's office consists of a coordinator, the highest level supervisor. There is a caseworker three position, three caseworkers, and then an admin clerk. And currently, the child support coordinator position is vacant, and we are not filling that at this time, and has been vacant for a period of time. The caseworker three, who is the most senior individual in this division of the DA's office, has been performing some of those additional duties. But the real frontline work in the child support office is done by the three caseworkers. And so losing one of the three caseworkers is significant. The... These caseworkers maintain regular contact with the public. They are gathering information or receiving requests for modification or review of existing orders and the like. The Child Support Enforcement, if any of you recall, I believe, try and give updates at least during the retreat as to the activities in the office. February of 2020, not only February, March was memorable because of the pandemic, but it was memorable with the child support because there was a drastic change in the calculation of child support. And historically, it was fairly straight formula application of percentages to income. However, with a great deal of studies and much debate, there was change, and so it's more of a sliding scale application of percentages, and that all went into effect February 2020. A lot of folks asked for review of their existing child support obligations and the like because of that. And also, the other factor that has... Continues to make child support enforcement and review of orders very busy is the instability of health insurance and the high cost of insurance for parents or employees or employers. Any change there oftentimes results in a significant change that the court will address in modifying child support, one way or the other, because of those changes in child support or the insurance. So at this time, we would ask that the board waive the attrition policy so we can begin advertising and try and fill this caseworker position as soon as possible, and we're not going to be taking any steps as far as filling the other vacancy until we come back before the board. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, you have any questions?
No. No, it's an essential position.
Yeah. This is one of these essential positions that, you know, part of the purpose of the attrition policy is to see if we can get by without that position, and I don't think that's the case in this instance, so... And if there's no further questions or comments, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the Humboldt County Child Support Division's request to waive Humboldt County attrition policy.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. So we can... We still have a little while. We can go to the next one, Dave?
Yes.
The Item 17 is Justice Court waiver of attrition policy. Consideration of discussion, possible approval, we agree a waiver of the county attrition policy for two positions. The county clerk one position that will become vacant on January 3rd, 2022, and a county clerk three position that will become vacant on November 11, 2021. Discussion and possible action. Good morning, Judge Lovelace.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Lovelace, Justice Speaks for the Record. What I've done is come before you today. Justice Court, as you had just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is losing positions, one this coming Wednesday, and another one who is retiring the end of December of this year. Justice Court is finding itself in a particular position due to the 81st legislation. That was a lot of... Many changes are happening to the courts throughout the state of Nevada. Right now, Justice Court has six employees, well, seven, including myself, with the two that are... Will be missing. One's going to be a criminal court clerk, and that individual is responsible for the day-to-day duties of the court itself and documentation, speaking to other attorneys, making sure other attorneys get the necessary documentation. So it's a pretty big position. Second, the other person is a court clerk in the civil side. As we probably all know, the civil... Through legislation, civil procedures are going to be changing quite drastically through the state, and these procedures are due at different time periods throughout the... Actually, next couple of years. With the approval, if the Commission approves these two positions, what my goal is to obviously advertise for them, go through the applications, set up interviews, make decisions based on that, and the interviews or the interviewee, the person that is selected, you know, would give a two weeks' notice. We certainly hope so. So the positions probably wouldn't be filled until the first part of the year. That's what my envision is at this point in time. But if you notice, on the staff report that I did, the background, and I'll just kind of give you, this is how busy it is. Number citations for 2020 was 4,926, as compared to 2019 was 6,423. I certainly believe this decrease is in the amount of citations due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Secondly, total traffic and criminal cases for fiscal year 2019 was 7,618 compared to fiscal year 2020 of 6,007. Again, I believe this decrease is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But I guess what I'm trying to say is these cases, all these cases come through Justice Court. Somebody has to handle these cases, and it's quite the process to do this. They have to be filed. They have to be tracked, and then, of course, court hearings on these. So... But that's what I like to do is, you know, ask for the attrition, a waiver of the attrition due to these requirements. And if you have any questions, Commissioners?
Well, it looks like you're getting more work rather than less work, so considerably more.
We are, we are.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No, these are essential. They're essential.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Franchiett moved to approve the approval regarding a waiver of the county attrition policy for two positions. The county clerk, one position that will become vacant on January 3rd, 2022, and the county... But the court... Excuse me, the court clerk, and the court clerk three position that will become vacant November 11, 2021.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing on the clerk three position. Currently, the person right now as a clerk three is moving into another position within the county. What I'm looking at doing is having a clerk two, or one or two, is what I just want to make sure that's...
Whatever works for you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You bet.
We have time to do the public works?
We've got a little time. We could always try to get through it here, and as long as we don't start before 10 o'clock, we're fine.
So we will do Item 18, Public Works Department Fleet Management Software Purchase. Vehicle purchases, general road projects for information only. The other two are for possible action. The... I'm sure I get the right one here. A is consideration, discussion, and possible approval to purchase fleet management software for... To replace obsolete fire marker program in an amount not to exceed $7,000 for the first year implementation, and set up a $3,000 service fee for each year thereafter. Discussion and possible action. I certainly believe this decrease is in the amount of citations due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, secondly, a total, uh, traffic and criminal cases for fiscal year two thousand nineteen was seven thousand six hundred and eighteen compared to fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty of six thousand, um, six thousand seven. Again, I believe this decrease is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But I guess what I'm trying to say is these cases, all these cases come through Justice Court. Somebody has to handle these cases and it's, it's quite the, uh, the process to do this. They have to be filed, they have to be tracked, uh, and then of course court hearings, uh, on these, so. Um, but that's what I, I like to do is, um, you know, ask for the attrition, uh, a waiver of the attrition due to these requirements. And I had, if you have any questions, Commissioners.
Well, it looks like you're getting more work rather than less work, so considerably more.
We are, we are.
Any, any questions, Commissioners?
No, these are essential. They're essential.
Okay, is there a, uh, motion?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, this is Commissioner French. I would move to approve the, uh, approval regarding a waiver of the county attrition policy for two positions. Uh, the county clerk, uh, one position that will become vacant on January third, uh, twenty twenty-two and the county, but the court, excuse me, the court clerk and the court clerk three position that will become vacant November eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing on the, uh, the clerk three position. Uh, the currently, the person right now is a clerk three, is moving into another position within the county. What I'm looking at doing is assign her clerk two or one or two. Is what I, I just want to make sure that's.
Whatever works for you.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You bet.
We have time to do the public works?
We got a little time. We could always try to get through it here and we, as long as we don't start before ten o'clock, we're fine.
Okay, so we will do, uh, item eighteen, Public Works Department, fleet management software purchase. Vehicle purchases, uh, general road projects, projects for information only. The other two are for possible action. sure I get the right one here?
Seventeen A.
A is consideration, discussion, and possible approval to purchase fleet management software for, to replace obsolete fire marker program in an amount not to exceed fi- seven thousand dollars for the first year implementation and setup and three thousand dollars service fee for each year thereafter. Discussion and possible action. Turn it over to you, Daniel.
Good morning, Daniel Ferrero, Assistant Public Works Director.
Jennifer Adair, I'm an administrative clerk for Humboldt County Public Works.
Our, uh, our first request here is for fleet, uh, management software. The current software we have is outdated, uh, no longer supported on the IT side. So if there is an issue, it can't be fixed. Um, so Dawn and Jen had gone through and, uh, reviewed two different companies that provide, uh, new software that we could use. And, uh, based on what they reviewed, um, the one from the I-Works is the company. Looks like the better deal. It has a better initial setup price, uh, no cost on the number of users for it. Uh, it's user-friendly and there's better pricing for future upgrades to the software. And then the customer service from them was, uh, better than the other company that they had reviewed, uh, software from.
Okay. This is something you, you'll find the money wasn't in the budget, was it?
No, it was not budgeted. Um, however, we would use our, uh, services, uh, budget money for that.
Mr. Chair, so they've actually, um, as you know, we've gone through the public works. There's a number of items that, number one, they didn't buy and are not going to buy this year. And then there's some other monies that became available in the service and supplies line item. So, uh, that again, they're not going to expend that money. So the money's in there. Uh, they just have chosen not to buy other things that were approved, so.
Thanks, Chairman. Um, I, this is kind of a pet peeve for me, I, not necessarily your, your request, but the, this whole, um, notion that, um, you know, we, we create an end of life for a lot of the softwares, uh, mainly because the company chooses not to support it any longer. And just, just exactly what your rec, your, your comment was just now, and I just, um, I, I just wondering, what, what is the estimated life expectancy of the, of the software you're requesting? And, and do you have confidence that, uh, you're going to have, uh, product support, uh, down the road with it?
I can tell you that I spoke with I-Works on numerous agents and, uh, they have been around for about twenty-one years. Um, this company, um, they are, they're there for you and they have continued to. Thank you. Uh, they have continued to, um, update us on, um, their end of the deal. And, uh, we are, uh, just, they're consistent. So I think that they're going to be around for a while. Also, this is a web-based program. This is not something that would be downloaded, uh, to our, any server of ours. Um, and the web-based programs I see, uh, they tend to, uh, stick out a little bit more and stick around for a little bit longer, so.
So you're comfortable with the life expectancy of it then?
Absolutely. And, uh, I reached out to Tim Henigan as well, uh, and he reached out to these, both of these companies. And he felt that both of them were supported through our IT system as well.
It's a racket. That's all I can say. It's a racket.
Well, it is. They all employ software engineers and as soon as they get the new best thing, then they make you buy the new version.
Yep.
That's why, that's why those companies are worth billions of dollars.
Exactly right.
This is Commissioner Hill. So you did reach out to IT and, and there was no questions on compatibility to our system?
The only question that, uh, Tim had was, uh, whether our, uh, our current authentication that we use within Humboldt County, uh, could continue to be used, uh, with the program. And, uh, I-Works said it had no problems with that.
Okay, and, and speeds and everything up there, you have everything you need to, to run it? We're not going to waste money on it and not be able to access our data?
No, it's, uh, all web-based, so it would just be ran through, uh, Wi-Fi, internet.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that was the only other one I had.
Well, will there be any savings by, I guess the FileMaker program is bought and paid for, you're just, we're just going to get rid of it. It's, we're not going to see any monthly savings there by?
No, uh, the FileMaker program, it is a downloaded program onto our server and, uh, it's, we can't get support on that anymore.
It's obsolete.
Uh-huh, and, um, we've already have been transitioning from using it for, um, our budget and accounting purposes. We have slowly implemented into using it into implementing Tyler in code, um, instead of using FileMaker because we, it's not supported and we are not trusting that it's going to continue to keep our information.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so the, the FileMaker product's been around about twenty-plus years, so.
That's what it is.
We've got our money's worth, so.
Yes.
And, I mean, the reality is they, they do have the money. Um, it's budgeted, they'll find it, so.
Right, yeah, we're not talking about an augmentation.
And this, I, I guess security-wise, if you've talked to IT, they feel this is secure, everything's secure. It's not going to, we're not going to compromise our data. What is this used for? Basically planning PMs and planning equipment?
Yes, and so it will actually give us, um, the opportunity to, uh, create a PM schedule. Versus what we do now is when people remember, they just bring it in. And we don't have any way of knowing, uh, the mileage or hours on other departments', uh, equipment. And so this was, uh, the best way to be able to track that. It will also connect with our FuelMaster, um, so, uh, it will track the odometer readings through FuelMaster and it will upload into this program as well. So we'll be able to keep track of that a little better.
Fire off PMs off of mileage versus?
Yes.
Good. I think there's, there's other advantages, you know, I was just thinking, and, uh, you know, having timely services done on the equipment versus just, uh, well, I think we're at five thousand miles. Oops, it was twenty.
Right.
I think there's going to be some equipment savings involved in this over the long haul too, so I, I'd be in agreeance with it, if you guys are comfortable with it.
If there's any further questions, can I get a motion?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, this is Commissioner French. I would move to approve the purchase of fleet management software to replace the obsolete FileMaker program in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars for the first year of implementation and set up, uh, a three thousand dollar service fee for each year thereafter.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item B is consideration, discussion, possible approval to purchase two pickups, one of which is to be used by the new Assistant Public Works Director and the other to be assigned to the Public Works Director as, in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars. Discussion and possible action. There you go.
Okay, Daniel Ferrero for the record, uh, our second request is for two half-ton pickups. Uh, the total price on those would not exceed seventy-seven thousand. The money for these two pickups would come from a previously budgeted diesel pickup, uh, in the amount of forty-five thousand. Spoke with dealers with their current situation, we wouldn't be able to get a diesel pickup for another year. And the need is, is more immediate. So Dawn was going to take off the, the diesel pickup for the year. And also he had budgeted forty-five thousand for a new, uh, mini excavator. Uh, he's pushed that off as well. Uh, so the total funds between those items was ninety thousand. This will be twenty thousand below and be the money for the half-ton pickups. Uh, Dawn's pickup that he currently has would be then distributed to the other operators, whoever needs it most at the point, this point. So it would be utilized and wouldn't be sitting. Uh, and this week, we even had two of our existing diesel pickups go down again with, uh, major death issues, so. We're kind of running short on, on motor vehicles for everybody to use at this point.
Questions?
I guess the first question that comes to mind, this is Commissioner Hill, is buying half-ton pickups for the public works. I understand you guys are the supervisors or the, or the directors, but I, I would be a little leery of half-ton pickups out running around just because they're available. I, I wonder if we're just spending money on throwaway vehicles at this point because we can't find a heavy-duty diesel truck, but you know your business more than I do. That's just my, my initial thoughts on it. Um, trying to fit, fit two pickups in there that are half-tons. I wonder what they'll look like in a year. Um, that'd be my concern.
Yes, I understand that. Uh, Dawn's biggest thought with those is the half-ton pickups, we won't be hauling the fuel. We won't be hauling the signs, a lot of the materials, uh, that are greater hands and other employees do every day. So from a utilization standpoint, the half-tons don't do, have to do as much with, uh, them being assigned to him and I, uh, as far as hauling fuel and being, and worked hard every day. But they would be four-wheel drive, like, get us out to work sites. At that point, uh, you know, we can always utilize the greater hands diesel pickups if we're off of main road or, or doing something of heavy labor with it.
If you're comfortable with it, I guess I am, so.
Yeah, I have the same concerns, Commissioner Hill. I mean, what if you need to deliver stuff out to the, to one of the guys, you don't have enough oomph there, you don't have a big enough pickup to do so?
Yeah, and that would be my other concern is, you know, I know you both are pretty hands-on, which we appreciate, uh, supervisors. And i- if you need to pull a water pump out to a job site or, or something like that, I hate to see your hands be tied just because of what was available. Um, but, like I say, you guys are the professionals, you do the job. I'm just, I'm bringing up concerns that, real life concerns that I would have, but, um, you guys are also in the ditches every day.
Any other questions?
So is, uh, the compromise in between then, um, using the additional twenty thousand dollars for three-quarter ton trucks? Bigger gas engines in them or something along that line, or, obviously, you're not going to wait for the diesel trucks because they're not going to be available, but.
Yeah, they, they were so far off that that wasn't really what Dawn was thinking we could do. I'd have to approach him with, uh, the three-quarter ton, bigger gas motors and, and see what a difference in price those would be and go from there. I, I believe his quotes were for half-ton, so we'd have to go back and, and look at that again.
I just, I, I guess my thing, I, I don't want to second-guess what their.
Yeah, that's, that's me knowing, yep. Commissioner Hill, again, I, I just recently ran into this in my own personal, uh, business of having to make compromises for what's, what's available and, you know, can't always get exactly what you want, but you guys are smart people. You've, you've thought about these things. Um, it's not my job to, to question how you do your job, I guess. If, if you guys feel comfortable and you feel that's the best value for the county to, to spread it apart this way, then, um, I, I guess I would be behind it, but.
Dawn was fully confident that.
Yeah, don't let, you know, don't let the twenty thousand dollar difference, uh, hurt the county. You know, i- if, if you wanted to propose to run a three-quarter ton gas truck or something, then, um, I would be behind that too, I guess. Does that make sense? Did I just ramble?
No, that makes sense.
Okay.
I, I would have to go to Dawn with that, being relatively new. I don't know if I had that authority to, to go with that, so.
Yeah, the only downside I see from that proposal is, uh, you know, we're probably going to have to have it come back in front of us with another number. In terms of, obviously, because you've, you've, you're quoting a number here, you know, that we're, we're going to have to have part of our motion. You know, if you need it right away and it's something that you guys feel comfortable with and you can make, make do with it, then I'm, I'm all over it, so.
Well, I, I think we could approve this and then you could take back what our discussion was to Dawn. And if Dawn liked our idea, he could scuttle about this one and bring back another one, I guess.
Mr. Chair, the other comment I would make, you're going to hear the, a similar discussion when, uh, Rick and, um, Tammy come up. Uh, just getting the vehicles you want.
Yeah.
Especially local.
Yeah.
Um, they can't even deliver things to you, so that's probably why Dawn did what he did. It's just not available.
Yeah.
That's the part of the problem.
Yep.
Commissioner Hill, again, it kind of sounds like he's trying to staff up his crew with, with the beefy trucks and, and, and maybe take, take the sacrifice for the supervisors to, to be able to turn these bigger trucks over to the guys. Because I think the truck Dawn has is in pretty good shape.
Yeah, no, it's, it's low miles and.
So, if anything, it's a compromise on their part to, to give this vehicle up to the guys that are actually doing the physical work, um, where they need that truck. And then, of course, he still needs something to get around and check these roads out with and, and you need something to get around to, to do your jobs.
We can always buy Dawn a little four, four-cylinder car.
I'm a Prius.
Then he'd show up at the next commission meeting and ask for this.
Put some charging stations out in the desert for him or something.
That's what you need to tell him is we, we approved a Prius.
We'd have to pry him out of that.
Get him in it one time and that's all there is.
Again, no, knowing Dawn and knowing the, the, the current situation with vehicles, um, I'm sure he's thought about all, a lot of these things, but, um, maybe you can bring back these concerns, but I, I'm for, uh, making sure you guys have the vehicles you need to do your jobs.
Okay, and there is just the, the immediate need that the two operators that lost their pickups this week, they took the, you know, the old Ford and the, the older spares we had, and now we're, we do not have a spare. We're running around in the suburban as all the shop has to work with, so. Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's important that we, uh, that we go forward with this and it, it may be a stopgap measure to get through it. But, you know, the, our departments may, may well have to plan their vehicles differently than they have, uh, these vehicles. It, it might be a long time before we see the, the normal that we saw before and they never see it again. As far as having plenty of options to pick from immediately, we may be ordering vehicles out.
Here.
Out in front so that they'll come in when Ron's tire comes in, wheel comes in, you know. From what I'm reading on this supply chain, at first it was going to be six months, then it was going to be a year. Now they're talking a couple of years before we get through, you know, these problems, so.
Uh, one more question. These half-ton trucks, I think he's, he's probably already found through his research and through the estimates, he's.
Yeah.
He's kind of has these semi-secured as far as finding the vehicles or?
Yeah, the, the two outfits that he worked with, they, they have them and we can get them relatively quickly, so.
And I saw somewhere, maybe it was your report or, or IT's report, but that, uh, the local company had not provided a bid yet. Did you, did we have a bid come in from?
Yeah, Humboldt Ford did provide that and they were lower than everybody. So their actual cost is probably going to be sixty-nine or maybe even seventy thousand. So if we went that route, we'd be underneath that seventy-seven cap.
Okay, and again, just, just like I always preach, it's really nice to buy local for obvious reasons and, and for the support and the service that we get from.
Yep.
Being able to drop it off locally and, and hopefully pick it up in a timely manner.
Yep.
Big proponent of, of shopping local when we can.
I agree. Ms. Chairman, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, please.
This is Commissioner French. I would move to approve the purchase of two pickups, one of which is to be used for the new Assistant Public Works Director and the other to be assigned to the Public Works Director, um, himself, uh, in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars.
All right, motion's on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Item C is presentation by Humboldt County Public Works Director, Don Calcoski, to update the, uh, board on road projects within Humboldt County. However, no action may be taken on the matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included, uh, on the agenda as an item upon which the action may be taken. Daniel, I don't know if you're doing this or do we have Dawn?
I think Dawn.
He threw you right to the fire.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, Dan Ferrero for the record. Just a review of what we've been working on the last few weeks since your guys' last meeting. In the Winnemucca area, we've been grading on Saban and Zerring, the south end of Bottle Creek. We had a lot of storm cleanup on Water Canyon and the National Drive areas. Then we were also grading on Jungle and the Sage Hills, Petroli Thompson Loops out there. In Paradise, they're working on Jimmy Dam Road, they had a wash out there, so they're putting in new culverts, did some subgrade repairs with the dozer, getting that bunted up this week, and then they're doing some more work out by Little Humble. In Golconda, they've been working grading on Midas in Eden Valley. Orvada area, they've been working, they patched some asphalt in McDermott after they did some water work up there, they had to repair some road, and then they've been out in Kings River grading. In Denial, they've been to Jackson Creek, Wild Creek, Cap Creek, Quinn River, Big Creek, and the Denial proper area, and Larry worked on the airstrip there last week on Thursday. Other things going on, we lost another operator this week, so we're down two operator positions in my previous position, so three open slots. We're pretty short-staffed at the moment. We have taken in some applications and ABLE's advertising for that online, so hopefully we can get some more bodies in there. We made good progress around the county, that rainstorm did cause some messes in some areas, it's good to see the moisture, but did some damage on the roads, I think we're getting caught up from that this week. The other item was Soldier Meadows in Little Oaihe, those roads, we had an MOU with BLM on who would be in charge of taking care of them. The MOU expired this summer, and Don and I are working with BLM currently to try and reestablish that. In the meantime, that's giving Soldier Meadows back to the county's responsibility, so Don's trying to figure out if we can get a crew out there to work on it. We have received some calls on it that it's pretty rough, pretty tore up, pretty bad, so it's a long ways to send, guys, you probably have to stay in Gerlach overnight and work on it through a week, but we're working on that. And that's relatively the overview from the Road Department.
So, Daniel, when you get, when they do get storms like we've gotten, that alleviates the need for someone running a water truck, huh?
Correct, yeah.
So can you take some of those, do you take some of those operators, do some of those, are they able to run the graders?
Yes, we have a couple guys, Juan, he's really good, he can run grader. In this situation, more of them were put on backups and the skid steer, doing a lot of cleanup work on the edges of the roads and cleaning culverts out so the water would move off the roadways. So that's mainly how they're utilized this week, but we have some employees that, excuse me, that have greater experience, so.
Okay, yeah, being down three operators is kind of a hit.
Did you anticipate losing another one, or... We did not, no, it was kind of a sudden thing, so.
Well, we appreciate all the work you did after the storm. Personally, I saw quite a bit of stuff that you guys had got done and quite a bit of disarray after our six-month with no water all coming in one day. I know it wreaks havoc for you guys, but it's like you guys were being very reactive and trying to get the roads cleaned up, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Daniel? If not, I guess that wraps it up. Thank you.
I just had one more. Commissioner Hill, greedily crossing, did you mention that road? Have you guys done anything out that way with...
We haven't been on it yet, but is it...
Yeah, but...
I think it's getting pretty tore up too.
Yeah, 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 and I know they haul some cattle and stuff in and out of there, and I've been hit a few times with that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just don't forget about that road.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
Glad to have you aboard. So we better roll back to the public hearing?
14, yes.
Item, we'll go back to item 14, it's a 10 a.m. public hearing, ordinance amendment request, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an ordinance amending Hubble County 6-1-78A regarding RH-21-13A, rezone request submitted by Terry Tompkins as partner of BDT Properties LP to change the C commercial zoning designation to M1 industrial zoning designation on property located at 4865 and 4975 West Winnemucca Boulevard, Assessor's parcel number 13-0052-07 and 06, discussion and possible action. Betty?
Good morning. Betty Lawrence with the Planning Department for the record. This was recommended for approval by the RPC at their September 9th meeting. It's just kind of a continuation of cleaning up those C zonings.
Okay, was there any opposition?
Nope, sent out the public hearing notice, didn't have any comments, Spaff.
Okay.
Okay. If there's any, if there's not any questions, could I have a motion?
You need public hearing.
Oh, public, yeah. Public comment, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment?
I don't see anything, Commissioner.
Okay. With that, if there is no public comment, then there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this Commissioner French, I would move that with approval of an ordinance amending the Humboldt County ordinance, County number 61-78A regarding RH 2113, a rezone request submitted by Terry Tompkins as partner to BDT Properties LP to change the C commercial zoning designation to M1 industrial zoning designation on property located at 4865 and 4975 West Winnemucca Boulevard, Assessor's parcel 13-0052-07 and 06.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Now we're going, Technology Services Request to Lease Vehicles, possible consideration, discussion, possible approval to lease two vehicles with Enterprise Fleet Management for a 2022 Ram 3500 pickup and a 2022 Jeep Compass. Expenditure from approved communication, from approved communication and IT budgets, budgeted half of the costs from each for fiscal year 2021 and 22, in an amount not to exceed $910.20 a month, per month, $10,000...
I don't get them all.
$10,922.40 per year for the 2022 Ram 3500 pickup truck, and $574.90 per month, $6,898.80 per year for the Jeep Compass. Discussion and possible action. Okay, Rick?
Good morning. Rick Grantham, Humboldt County Technology Services. We just handed out a brief updated sheet to give you an idea of what we're up against. Vehicles are getting harder and harder to get, we all know. So what we did is a little comparison chart here to give you an idea for picking up a Ram pickup versus purchasing a pickup. We asked the local dealership for quotes, we have asked several times, they did not deliver. I'm not sure if there's a rule, we're supposed to ask them over five times, but we kept asking and they did not deliver. We looked at checking into other dealerships throughout the state, and you can see the names that are listed on here. So far at this point, the Fleet Management to purchase a 2022 Dodge, if by the time this is authorized, they're still available. We're hearing left and right that they no longer offer these prices. So for the Ram pickup, we would still like to use Fleet Management to pick up the Ram pickup for that, and Fleet Management also for a Jeep Compass.
So these Fleet companies, they're having just as much trouble getting vehicles as the average Joe, huh?
Yes.
Even with that, Mr. Chair Dave Mendiola, I believe the delivery time on these, I don't know if Serena gave you a specific, but it's a six to eight months before we can get them, even through this process.
Yeah, wow. And it has been in the past three to four months in the past to be able to get them, so now that time has increased.
But you could nail down the price now if you buy it?
This is what they're quoting us, yes.
It's almost going week to week at this point.
Yeah.
On these things.
Then we were going to, you were going to talk with Gina in regards to whether leasing versus buying made sense, and did you do that?
Not directly about that subject, but we did reach out with Don Calcoski and look at purchasing vehicles outright, but the availability has not been there. And we did reach out to Dolan to buy it outright, but it is more expensive if they have a truck on the lot and available at the time than the actual Fleet Management lease.
So if you're not going to get it for six months, do they want you to put it down now? You don't have to do that either.
No. No, there's no down payment, it just comes as part of that initial capital payment, so...
But it may come, may not come until the next fiscal year.
It's possible. It's absolutely possible.
How long is the lease for?
60 months.
Five years?
Yes.
Same as the purchase, right?
$1,000 difference. Do you own it five years or you don't own it five years?
$900 difference.
And we've drove by these dealerships, there's nothing on the lots, it's...
No, there isn't, I know.
It's hardly a big concern on there.
It's not just Nevada, it's all...
You've got to be very proactive.
Right. It's like bidding online.
Yeah, it is, yeah, phone calls and...
It's crazy, it's crazy times.
Well, I have no, we went over this the last time, and I know the needs, I think the need's there.
Yeah, it's just a matter of what you can give it, this is just a strategy in terms of getting it. Oh, it is, so.
If it works.
If it works, yeah.
Is there money in the budget on the Ram to buy it rather than lease it?
I did not budget for an outright purchase, but I'm sure we can work on something like that, but...
Is your budget padded enough where there is stuff you won't use?
I don't know at this point. I generally don't try to pad and buy budget.
I know, but there's usually in budgets, there's things that change and you don't buy, that's where I'm coming at, is there money in that budget?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Dave Mendiola to Commissioner Tipton. Yeah, I think if you look at Rick's budget year on year, he's usually 10% to 15% under his budget, and that's mainly because you just don't get to all the projects that you want to get to, or now in this current world, you can't even get the equipment that you need to do the things you want to do, so it's a combination of things. So I think my answer to you would be, yeah, there's money that he can find, so.
Yeah. This Commissioner Hill, do you, what do your vehicles look like after five years? You anticipate keeping it over five years?
Don't know. Right now, the current pickup we have now, we have $31,000, I've put approximately $8,000 since July on it, and those numbers will probably increase after the first of the year because a lot of our projects are going to be up north, and we'll be putting a lot of mileage on. Whether they're still drivable, it probably would be, we take pretty good care with them.
Your personal feelings with dealing with this is the lease is the better option as far as money-wise and as availability, or...
Currently, yes. Get it in there, the next available one that comes available, they'll give it to us. Right now, if we drive around with money in our pocket and find one on the lot, I don't know if we could do that.
Right.
Offer the money right then and there.
That's how it has to happen, too.
This one isn't on the lot, though, this 55533, it's not there to go get.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised if you could buy it at that.
Yeah.
I might look at pickups here recently, I mean, unless you just got a steep in the steering wheel, maybe you might get it there.
Yeah, they're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little surprised at the price for the lease as well, because I did the comparison, and it was just, like you say, about $1,000 bucks more over a five-year period, so. Like, my truck I just bought, what, a year ago now? A little over a year ago? And I went by the dealership, had my oil changed, asked them if they'd buy it back, because we were talking about this, right?
Right.
And they'd buy it back for $5,000 more and I paid for it. So I'm thinking about trading it in, I just don't know if I can make that one.
What are you going to do then?
Right, that's the issue. I do have a couple extra cars, so I probably can make it.
I don't know, I would rather see us buy it, but I don't think that that $55,000 number's going to be accurate today, today is...
I think by the time you get it done, it's going to be significantly more than...
Well, it wouldn't, and it was a fancy level, 72. It didn't have nothing fancy in it.
Yep. Got a brand-new one sitting in the parking lot. Yeah, I'm good with whatever you're comfortable with there.
Well, I think we've already established the need, no question there, it was just a matter of a strategy in terms of how to make it happen if the best thing for the buck, so.
You're not sure these amounts are going to get it done, are you?
The price she quoted us for the lease, from my understanding, is still holding.
Yeah, they're locked in, so once we sign those, the lease ones are locked in, yeah. They can't change that on you.
Okay.
And that's based on their current price from the manufacturer, so they're not getting hurt as long as they get it in. That's one of the things, all the windows for ordering on fleet are closing. Usually they close around mid-November, late-November, so we're up against the wall here on this one.
How long did you say on delivery for the leased vehicles?
This can be as far out as six months.
Wow.
Yeah. Normally, when we order them in the beginning of the year, it averages probably about four to five months, but it just depends on what's available.
Nine.
Right.
They tell you six.
Yeah, it's a year.
It's like Dave mentioned earlier, there's holes in everything nowadays, it just...
Do we have to start paying the lease before we get it?
Not until we accept it.
That's definitely what we should do, probably.
Like you say, we're up against the wall in terms of the lease rollover, in terms of negotiating the prices again, right now, so.
It's not going to get any easier in a while.
No.
Three to five years.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Chair, I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the ID Department to lease vehicles, Interlyce Enterprise Fleet Management, one is a 2022 Ram 3500 pickup, and the other is a 2022 Jeep Compass, with a not to exceed on $910.20 per month for the 2022 Ram 3500 pickup truck, and $574.90 per month for the Jeep Compass.
Motion is on the floor. Motion is on the floor. Is there any further questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 But the Jeep Compass, you think you can get it sooner or is it out that far too?
I don't remember what her comment was on that.
I haven't had a whole lot of comment on that, so.
Yeah. I think it's not much difference because the biggest hangups right now are those chips.
Yeah.
So I don't think it really makes a huge difference. By the way, thanks Tammy. I know Tammy burned up the phone lines trying to find people and get quotes and emails.
Lot of hours spent on this.
Quite the process.
It honestly is. I'm telling you, it's exhausting.
You know something's up when the dealerships are calling you back after you've bought a vehicle and a year later wanting to buy it back.
That and it used to be you'd go into a dealer and you'd get hooked up with the salesman and they won't leave you alone. Now it's like you can't even get them to call you back. It's kind of switched. You gotta bug them. Yeah. Used to be once they got hold of your phone number, it was all over.
I really wanna buy it.
Yeah.
It's not that way now.
Is there anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
If I get mine first, I'll sell it to you, Rick.
Sorry.
I got one ordered too. If I get it first, I might sell it to you. Might make some money.
No, no profit.
Of course not.
Okay, letter of support. Oh, we're gonna, let's, if we could, let's take another five minute break. Almost missed it.
Right out of left hand.
Okay. We have item number nineteen, letter of support for the Hot Pot Iron Point Solar Project. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of letter of support for the Hot Pot Iron Point Solar Projects in Humboldt County and authorize, excuse me, County Manager Dave Mendiola to sign the letter. The letter is addressed to the Public Utilities Commission as part of their approval process. The projects are located near the current North Valmy Power Plant and will serve as new energy sources to replace the current coal-fired plant near Valmy. Discussion, possible action. Mr. Mendiola, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chair Dave Mendiola, so I received a phone call from Linda Bolen. Linda Bolen is the attorney of note for the Hot Pot Iron Point Solar Projects. Linda Bolen has worked in this space for quite a long time. I started talking to her about the Avengrid, one that's now already in place up there beyond the Moat exit there. So she's got quite a bit of experience in this area. Last week, the issue, and what the issue at stake here is the Envy Energy is trying to purchase the system. So it's not in place yet, but the whole idea behind this is they'll build it, Envy Energy will buy it. And the Southern Nevada folks are opposed to this. And it's all a money issue. It's money coming out of that Southern Nevada plan, lands plan. And so they're opposed to it. And according to them, it's just a matter of where the money goes. Apparently, there's another one that's planned down there that they're supporting. They don't want to support the one up here. So it's, so all this was, is she asked that the county commissioners provide a letter of support for the system here. Now, this one will be on the lands that are right near the current North Valmy Power Plant. The idea eventually, as I understand it, is that this, all of this solar energy plus that that went up near Moat, the Battle Mountain Solar Project, which is what they called it, it's in Humboldt County, of course, will, that's stuff that'll go on the grid and they'll also generate that through the grid through the North Valmy Power Plant. So that's one of the things the North Valmy will do in the future. This is a very large project, much bigger than the one up at Battle Mountain Solar Project. I know I've been working with J.D. Sullivan, who's the owner of this property for five or six years. He's been going through the process and going through this whole thing. And all along, you know, it's very clean. It'll be six or seven full-time employees. So it won't replace what North Valmy currently has, but it certainly will, again, provide some jobs in Humboldt County.
Isn't there some tax generated too?
Correct.
Not for a while, but there will be tax generated?
Right. They've got some abatements like most projects like that do, but there will be, this will be a tax generating business.
Based on the kilowatts that are
Yeah, that they actually produce. Yep. So.
Has there been any discussion on what will happen to the plant? North Valmy's going to, you know, be working with these people. What about the other one?
Well, the other one already is. If you recall, when we went through that process, that permitting process, they built, Envy Energy built a station. It's on the property of the Battle Mountain Project, and that's where they collect it and they send it on to the grid from there. So they've already got an agreement with Envy Energy there. You know, and of course, Envy Energy, along with Idaho Power, who's the half-owner of North Valmy, they have in their strategical plans to generate X amount percentage of all power will be from renewable energy. So that's why Idaho Power wanted to shut it down and wants to get this online. And the same for Sierra Pacific, who is the actual Envy Energy entity, so.
It makes all the sense in the world, you know, the infrastructure, the power lines and stuff that were there for the coal-fired plant are already there. That's a huge cost. It's already been paid for. They just have to hook into it. So it's an ideal, you know, out there in the middle of that big old desert there, that's an ideal place for a solar farm.
Being, using those, the way it was described to me too, using that switching equipment from unit one and two from North Valmy allows them to seamlessly go to, from solar power to base load when the sun goes down. So that, you know, actually, because I asked a question Linda just said before she retired, but I asked her about that and she said their intent at the time was to at least leave one of those units online, either one or two, rather than retire both so that they could deal with base load.
And they can sell credits when they have one that's not online too. They can sell credits in California and other places.
Exactly. And that's what they're thinking, I'm sure. Makes a lot of sense.
I think we definitely need to support them.
I do too.
I do too.
Are these solar fields working to the capacity that they anticipated? I know, you know, they tried the wind stuff in Paradise Valley, different places, and it just didn't do what they thought it would do.
Oh, the one down in Tonopah?
Yeah, and the big windmills. Are these solar fields all they cracked up to be, I guess, simple way to put it?
You know, I don't have an answer to that. That would be something that would be interesting to bring those folks in, especially the Battle Mountain Solar Project since they've been up now and running, to get some idea. And I can easily do that. I actually talked to one of their folks a couple of weeks ago.
Because my thought is, you know, there's a lot of land that it's taken up. I mean, it is putting out a big footprint in our deserts for, you know, are they doing what they, what they thought they'd do? Or are they just?
Well, there's a reason why they're
Using us for research.
Right through where we're seeing them, that they're selecting that. My son's a solar engineer and he said that the, just the aspect of the sun and this latitude, whatnot, this is, there's a band through Nevada that is, that's the sweet spot that they're looking for. And that's why they're, a lot of them are looking along that same corridor. The, his comment to me about having to do with the technology and whether or not there's any hype involved in it, whether or not the efficiencies are there, he said, they're all over it. He said, in terms of the, you know, the solar arrays automatically turning with the sun and whatnot, in order to maintain optimum production. He said, that's all state-of-the-art stuff. He said, they're far more efficient and far more cost-effective to the companies than the windmill setups, just because of the mechanics involved in it.
Right.
I've drive by the new solar deal out there in Battle Mountain quite regularly. I don't think they've been operating too long. Maybe at the most, I don't even know, two months. Looked like they were working, still a lot of trucks and things working out there a couple of months ago. And it's pretty well buttoned up now. It looks like it's going. But also see that Valmy's still running too.
Yeah.
Yes, they're moving too. Just be interesting to see.
Yeah, I think it was two thousand twenty-five, they were gonna shut the first part of the plant down. And I think that was the idea behind was to get this up and running to sort of coincide with that, so.
But even with that, they've only been running Valmy like three or four months a year and the rest of the time it's shut off anyway.
Yeah, it's true.
They still keep a crew there, pay people to be there in case they need it, but
Good thing they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
I guess the main goal of my question is, how many square miles and square acres of land do we have to utilize in solar to produce what Valmy would produce? Are we gonna turn into a giant solar panel in Nevada?
Good question.
You know?
That's a lot.
That would be one of my concerns.
Well, you know, when we were down at NACO meeting, and not to get too far off base here, but there's also gonna be some geothermal that they're looking at, particularly in a denial area. They'd like to come to speak with this commission too at some point to talk to me about it. But with that, let's move on here. Do we want to support this?
I would.
Okay. Somebody'd like to make a motion?
This is Chairman, this is Commissioner French. I would move to approve a letter of support for the Hot Pot and Iron Point Solar Projects in Humboldt County and to authorize County Manager Dave Mendiola to sign the letter. The letter is addressed to the Public Utilities Commission as part of their approval process, and the projects are located near the current North Valley Valmy Power Plant and will serve as new energy sources to replace the current coal-fired plant at Valmy.
Okay, motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Nay. The record show that Commissioner Ross voted nay. Brings us to Ms. Lynn's reports and correspondence. Commissioner French, would you like to start?
I just had a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I attended a Nevada Works Executive Board Meeting to consider, we lost the one-stop operator contract for Title II. And we had a, it was the process of contacting a new contractor and approving those contracts to put them in place, get the one-stop stop center back up and running. And then I also attended a NIESARC review for the Endangered Species Program. NIESARC, of course, is that endangered species. It was, initially it was designed as a policy developing entity for recommendations back to DOI. Still is. It's, there isn't a whole lot of people in Department of Interior listening at this moment in time. But the interesting part is some policy changes right now that changing the way Department of Interior views potential additional listings to add to the endangered species list, which will have a, has a potential for significantly impacting this county because there's four additional species that are on the sensitive species list that are eligible for this. So I'll keep you up to speed. We're keeping them, we're gonna keep them honest on it, at least in terms of the science and whatnot, and see if we can, we can keep them on the sensitive species list as opposed to pushing them under the threatened or endangered list. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Tipton?
I had, as Gina alluded to in her comments, a meeting, an ARPA meeting where we explained our recommendations to a group. our recommendations to a group of concerned citizens, something we didn't have to do, but we thought it would be good to do. I thought it went pretty well. Had a, sit in on a meeting with BLAM and concerning horse feed lot with Commissioner Didn't get a lot out of that meeting, but they were pretty adamant that they were going forward with what they did do on it. And I had a, attended a meeting with the Western Nevada Development District, County Manager Mendiola and Jan, the Development Authority. It was a good meeting, made some good contacts, I think. It was basically, it was basically a meeting to make you a better board member, is what it ended up being. But had some good contacts, got a good contact with someone that's really been involved with I-11 and what's going on in that and why it is where it is and why it's not where it's not. And been working, I've been working with some stuff on HGH. I have a meeting coming up the end of the month with that, next Tuesday, I guess, with that. That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
This is Commissioner Hill. I don't have much to report. I missed the Paradise Valley Conservation District meeting on Friday. I was traveling to a high school rodeo. And I did attend the Futures that day, two weeks ago. I believe Commissioner Tipton, Commissioner Cherry, Dave was there. That was very eye-opening and very well put together. I want to say Jan and crew did a heck of a job. There was a lot more information there than I would have ever thought. Kind of whole new appreciation for all that. It was very beneficial to me to see all that, so good job. I think that's all I have.
Commissioner Haas, I don't know if you've been able to attend any meetings, but here's your chance if you have.
I attended the landfill committee. And I hope this isn't, it's echoing through my stuff here, Dave, if, I'm hoping it's not doing that to you. Anyway, the landfill went very well. Business as usual. And that's about all we had to say.
Okay, thank you. I too, you know, like Commissioner Hill said, I went to the Winnebago Futures and it's interesting to see where these companies are presently and what their future plans are. That's where I met up with Eric Cole and asked him to come to this meeting and give us a presentation on what their company's plans are for Winnebago Farms. And so you make a lot of good contacts there too, so that was good. The only other thing is, I had a meeting with, or a conference call with Senator Masto's staff in regards to Highway 95 and what needs to be done from their perspective on a local level to get some, the ball rolling on getting some improvements on 95 before the mine starts construction, before it starts operation. And they did think it was a good idea of a letter coming from maybe this commission, the community, and left him in Nevada, asking for the, NDOT, asking for the federal government to find the funding that were required to make these improvements. And so, yeah, that was the main focus of that, that meeting was to talk about improvements on 95. And it is difficult. I mean, it just seems like pulling teeth with NDOT to try to get them to understand that, you know? There's a lot of issues there that need to be addressed. And I understand, there's a lot of roads in this state and the rural areas or the urban areas are growing so fast that trying to keep up with that growth is difficult. We hear here how NDOT is having as much trouble as anybody of keeping employees. So, you know, the workforce isn't there. And really, the dollars are not adequate either to get all the work done that needs to be done, so. But I think it's a case of the squeaky wheel is going to get the grease and we just got to keep squeaking.
I think so.
The new infrastructure bill that just passed, there may be some money going.
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, and that's all I had. So if there's nothing else, we'll move to future agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got several here. We still have several land use plans that we're in the process of creating a couple of them and then updating some others. Wildlife Plan is one that we did cover at our meeting on Friday with Andy. So that'll come back to you on the 22nd. We've still got a chapter on acquisitions and disposals and then also special designation still, so. And then we came up, excuse me, on another one that we identified on endangered species as well. So she's going to put some stuff together and we'll meet on those as well. Public hearings, we'll bring back nuisances. We did finally get confirmation of Mr. Sakarata's issue. He did, he was served, so that now we can move forward on that one. I'm not sure if we're going to see them on the 22nd or if it'll be in December, but Okay, and then a couple of things that came out of some of the final conversations here. Bring Battle Mountain Solar in and have them kind of give us an update on the project, what's completed, efficacy, those kinds of issues. So I'll bring them back. Same for geothermal. We'll get an update from them. I don't think they've been before us before, so. And then water management, Winnebago Farms, I did, I was texting back and forth with Eric Cole last night and he's pretty sure he can put everybody together for November 22nd to come back. So that's, those are the ones that I have.
I just have more comment. I don't know if it needs to go to public comment or if we want to do it here, but this Commissioner Hill, I kind of wanted to echo off of what Lindsey Jimenez spoke about during public comment. I've had some fairly lengthy conversations with her and I guess that whole group. And I also feel some of the frustration. It seems that there's a lot of name-calling going on around between the hospital board and the health board that we've created. You know, I think they truly want to see people stop dying in the hospital. I truly do think that, I do. I also do. You know, there's lots of rumor out there that there's different protocols and procedures that have been approved that maybe HGH isn't using. I'd like answers on that. I'd like to know, you know, if what they're using is the most up-to-date and the most proven to be the most effective course of treatment. I know they've tried to approach the health board and were told they needed to take a different avenue. And then they go to the hospital board and they're told that this isn't the place for them. So, you know, I feel their frustration, you know. And I don't want this to be a name-calling thing, but if there are better policies out there for treatment of COVID, you know, we need to have those conversations, whether it is the hospital board. Would it be possible to get the health board and the hospital board together in the same room and the public and ask these questions and get some true answers? You know, that's, I think what people really want is some true hardcore answers and maybe to hear it from HGH or the HGH board, you know, this is why we're doing these procedures. This is why we're not taking XYZ medication. This is why we're not handing out XYZ supplement, you know? This is, this is the standards that we're held to and why. And I guess the second part of that is, are we being proactive enough as a health board, you know, with all these deaths that we're having? Are we, are we holding enough meetings? Are we holding people's feet to the fire to be doing what they need to be doing during this? Or are we just kind of sitting back as a commission going, well, you know, we had two more deaths today, you know? Am I making any sense? Am I rambling or do?
No, you're making sense.
Do you feel the public frustration, I guess, am I conveying that as, it seems like there's a disconnect between the two boards and maybe a sense of, we're all on the same field. We all want the same goal, but we all have different roadblocks, I guess. You know, as a hospital board, you have different roadblocks and as a health board.
I think, I'm pretty sure that we could get the interim CEO to address the commission on some of those issues. I've had a couple of meetings as well on what Commissioner Hill talked about. But what I don't get out of any of these meetings is I don't get any specifics of what whoever's talking to me wants. They want it to be over, they want different stuff, but there's nothing specific. And that makes me wonder what the general public expects of this board or expects of the health board or expects of the hospital. I know the hospital can address that, that their guidelines are the same as hospitals all across the country. I know when you look at the amount of deaths that we've had in our population, it runs pretty true to the rest of the nation. So there's, you know, what is specifically that somebody wants? And I would love to see them be able to be put on the agenda, but you got to have some specifics.
We had, to go to that point, we, this morning, we had two opposing opinions this morning. We had the first person that came in and handed us this. They said masks don't work. What are you doing with the mask mandates and why are you, you know, you're placing anti-vaxing question? We've heard it all. And then we had the other question as to what are we doing with regard to the services that are provided in the hospital? And it was almost diametrically opposed to what they asked for. And that is the frustration. I've had several conversations with Dr. Stringham and, because he's kind of up against the wall too with it in terms of how do we approach it as a board, as a health? Because we have one side that definitely feels it's unconstitutional to be following through with the mask mandates and the vaccine mandates and all of those civil liberty-related questions. And then we have the other side of it who are looking at us very hard as to why aren't we doing those things and people are dying as a result of it? But I'm just going to say, if you look at the raw statistics from our hospital, you know, the hospitalizations, the infection rate, the deaths that have occurred, and I am no way trying to minimize any of that, is that we're right on, statistically, we're right on the money in terms of what's happening nationwide. And then basically, if you look at the group of people that are being impacted heavily, most heavily right now in this county, it's that population of unvaccinated. It's truth, it is. And yes, there are some breakthrough cases that are starting to occur or whatnot, but in terms of the people that are showing up in the hospital, they are and whatnot, the vaccinated people are not showing up to the degree that the folks that chose not to be vaccinated. And I guess what I would say is it goes back to something Dr. Stringham, you know, and when we were skull-cramping about what is the role of the health board, I think it's information at this point. And I think that's where you're going with it. Jesse, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think it is information. And if you look at the, those documents that were produced by Nicole, having to do with what if I have this, what should I do, that decision tree that came out, that's the kind of information I think people need to know, need to hear. Because a lot of folks are saying exactly the same thing. They're getting most of their information off of the internet and some of it is all right and some of it isn't.
Is it only information? Or, you know, the other thing that has come to light or come to mind is, you know, our county health officer, Dr. Stringham, you know, what's his affiliation with HGH? You know, and he's been very open that he's not directly connected with HGH. So is there different views from our director, Dr. Stringham, versus what's happening in the hospital? Is there difference in opinion of protocol? You know, those are the types of things that, you know, I guess, is there things that we can be doing different and why?
Well, this is what.
And are we doing enough as a health board to put pressure if there is other options out there to, you know, whether it be the antibodies or that stuff? Are we doing all we can as a health board to see it through to the end, you know? Does that make sense?
I think that, you know, I think each one of us has people coming to us because we are commissioners and they don't know where to go. And, you know, there's not a whole lot we as commissioners can do.
No, but I mean, we do have, we do have a voice and we represent the county that we're in. And if there's something we can do as a health board and to, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to open blame to HGH at all, but if there's, if there's other ideas and protocols out there that can be looked at, is it the health board's job to say, hey?
Oh, I agree.
You know, we make some recommendations, you know? Or would that be Stringham to say, hey?
Both.
You know?
Both would. And it comes back to Ken, something you said a second ago, and that is having to do with the specifics. That's where I've struggled with it, is you'll get lots of 30,000-foot comments and whatnot, but what specifically would you have us as a health board take an action or make a recommendation? Is it protocols in terms of therapeutics on the, once somebody goes into the hospital? Or is it protocols with regard to how do we evaluate and how do we treat people and what does the decision tree look like? And I think, to your comment though, a second ago, getting the health board and the.
I thought that was a great idea.
Get the hospital board in the same room. And then, and then this is what we know. This is how we, this is what the hospital is doing and this is why. And, you know, pull out that, those documents that were floating around here a while ago having to do with the information I think a lot of people need, you know, in terms of what they need to be thinking about doing and have, but have specifics. The conversation, you can't have a conversation like we had here at the beginning of this meeting today and hope to get anywhere on it. Because then you, because you're disputing data and those types of, and at that point it becomes, you get lost in the show.
We want facts. And it should be structured on this is what we're going to talk about. And, you know, I can definitely get some better clarification.
I want to read some updates from the CEO. Do I need to do that in public comment or can I do it here from?
Wait. Better as a part of public comment. As opposed to the future agenda items.
So those were kind of actionable items, I guess, Dave, that, you know, to see where I'm thinking and to go along with what Lindsey said. The other part of that was getting a definite clarification on who controls the testing facility? Is it, is it HGH or is it the health board? Who controls the testing facility and what decisions are made there?
Yeah, HGH controls all of that. The testing facility, what kind of protocols they set up, what kind of treatments they provide. And just as a reminder, we had a meeting, it's been a month ago maybe, Mr. DA, with our legal and medical experts. HGH was on the call, Dr. Stringham, legal folks, trying to address this very issue. And what we walked away with was HGH told us that they wanted to take over all messaging regarding treatments, protocols in the hospital, including testing and what they do. And that's why we've just backed away from the health board. They felt like that was their area of expertise. They should be the ones delivering, not the county. health board or the county commission or the city council. And that's kind of why I have pushed back to Lindsay and others and said, you need to go to the HGH board or to the CEO and ask that question specific to the issues around what kind of treatments do you provide and why do you not? That might be a better question. It's why do you not provide a certain type of treatment? And so, because we, again, we're not medical experts, no, with the exception of Stringham, but he's, you know, he's just one voice. So in the end, HGH makes that decision on what they're going to provide for their their
Well, I guess with that being said, as a as a member of the health board and a commissioner, I demand those answers. I want those answers. I mean, push the public, push the public away all you want, but I demand, I want those answers.
To say they want to do that, where's that message? Where can you find that message?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
That's that's
I think the point that wasn't made
That it's changed CEO.
Right. Yeah, they've got things going on as well and and I I fully trust that, you know, they would they would come through. I just, I just haven't seen anything and the questions keep coming to me. And and again, the other part of that, your your question, Commissioner Hill, is I get probably, I don't know, on average, 10 or so calls a week that people wanting to know, why aren't we mandating masks? Why aren't we So I get it from both sides, I guess, is what I'm saying. And so that's one of the things that I think, I'm just guessing now, that became very frustrating with the health board is you have competing sides. Everybody's beating you up. Now, the other side never comes to a meeting, you know, because they claim they're, they fear coming to a meeting. I don't know, but that's what they're telling me. And so that makes it even more frustrating just to try to balance it out, you know? They burn up my phone after the fact, I guess. And so that's, it's difficult, I guess. And I tell them that, that they really should show up at the meetings.
Yep.
Yeah, and it may be something where maybe something that county manager can follow up with with the hospital folks to say, hey, can you can you provide us with a presentation? Commissioner Tipton brought it up and just so that, so this is another area that the information can be disseminated to the community. And I think that was part of our, some of our prior conversations as well of if if you guys are taking the lead on on that work, how can we help in getting that information out?
As far as I'm a health board member, we're all health board members. I don't know any more than those people sitting in that audience what's going on.
Yeah.
That's frustrating.
Very, yeah, that's
They look at us for answers or and we don't have, because we don't get the information either.
Yeah.
You know, I think with the change in in leadership at the hospital has just occurred. I think this might be, this might be a good time to to actually ask for that.
Yeah, and maybe it's as simple as having a call in health board meeting together and inviting those key folks and and get some of these questions answered and if there is a disconnect somewhere, then I guess it would be our our obligation to try to find that and try to try to connect the dots.
Try to drill down on exactly if if there is a problem in terms of consistency or protocol or anything like that, that drill down on that in the meeting and then take an action on anything that comes out.
I think we have to be really careful in structuring that meeting. We don't need to get into the argument, is this treatment better than the other?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor. I just disseminate information and try to try to put the right people together and
Just knowing what is available.
I I just don't want to see this as a scenario of, oh, I thought you were doing it. Well, I thought you were doing it. You know, keep those communication lines open and and hope for progression, I guess.
Right now, it's like we just passed the buck from one group, one or
I think it feels like that to the public too, that they just get tossed around like a like a basketball and
And that's where, that's when somebody shows up.
Yeah, yeah, no, and
Understandable.
You know, but
Commissioners' comments?
Commissioners' comments? Sure, we could go back there.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Working with with HGH, this will solve some of this. It's not going to solve all of it, but our COVID inpatient volume is looking pretty good right now. We only have two in the hospital. ER volume has been manageable in the later part of last week. The screening clinic volumes have lessened to 70, 80 most days where they were much, much higher than that. Working with EMS to develop a Regeneron treatment plan, possibly through the community paramedicine program with the assistance of Dr. Stringham, so that it didn't, won't have to be done in the emergency room. And that's become a much larger area of frustration due to some unrealistic expectations of what our clinical team can manage and still be able to perform on their daily duties. And for clarification, we absolutely have Regeneron available at HGH. It's just done at the physician's discretion in our ER, which ER is a separate group of doctors or not Humboldt County employees. Also wanted to ensure that that our inpatient medication management plan for COVID patients is the same as all larger hospitals and what is recommended standard of care for treatment across the United States. So.
That was from Robin then or?
That was from Rob.
Okay.
So, yeah, I and and I've put out a
That's, that sounds
Put out a message to her to see if she'd be willing to come present to us at the board.
Well, maybe
Do we call?
I think we can, we can probably talk about this now because this would be a future item, but you know, if if we're relying on doctors who are not even part of HGH to make, at their discretion to give this, that could be a failure right there. You know, in in other counties, they have set up, the counties have put together clinics like an Alco to where the county is managing it. Or I guess the county's manager, the county hospital, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the Regeneron, yeah, that piece.
That's where the part where Ken said that Dr. Stringham was involved in this new setup would make complete sense to me because he's he works for the county. Under that capacity, he works for the county and and we take his his professional recommendation on on who gets this, but at least we have the say of, you know, if he's on board that to give this treatment, then we'll ensure that it's getting dispersed fairly and evenly and and all that. So that is, that does clear up some of it.
Yeah, well, I know they have it. But I don't know what the protocol is of who gets it when and why, you know, why I don't know those.
Right, which goes back to Commissioner Hill's comments is that you know, if if they announced this and made it public that here's the protocols, here's how, here's what happens, it would be very helpful. I had the same situation with my mother recently with COVID and you know, I was told in that same meeting that I was talking about that the protocol was if you test, if you come through the testing procedure, whether it's in the ER or at the drive through and you have symptoms and you test positive, you immediately go to ER if you're at the drive through or if in ER, they would go to the Regeneron treatment immediately. That didn't happen with my mom. They just sent her home, said you'll be fine. Next day she was really bad. So I called and said, I want Regeneron. And they said, no problem. And they gave it to her and next day she was 100% better.
Right.
So it just, there's just something missing in between.
Yep.
And I I suspect there's always going to be protocols. You can't just make a sweeping statement, right? If somebody has certain conditions, they may not do that. And I get that. But that's what I asked the doctor when I called. I says, is there is there something about my mother's case that would, that you would say you should not give her this? And he said, nope. And I said, okay, let's do it. So anyway.
Some of those, some of those treatments, one may work way better too, if it's early on in in the infection.
Right, right. And that's the other, yeah, Regeneron is like within seven days of positive.
Yeah, and maybe this can move on to a health board meeting and we just maybe get some more of the key people involved and get some of those questions answered. But like you say, you get a lot of calls. I I think it's time that we call together a health board meeting and and and
If we're going to do that, but don't you think it would be better if if we worked hard at getting a list of specific questions answered?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't, you know, here's the question, here's the answer.
Yeah, and I bet I could have a list in two minutes if
We need to just focus the meeting.
Yep.
And make sure we don't get it hijacked.
Yep.
You know, but I think from that standpoint, I think being silent when all of this is rumbling under the covers, so to speak, is is really negative all by itself.
It is.
So I think to your point, Jesse, I think that's, it doesn't, it makes sense for us to air the laundry and figure out exactly where we're at at this moment in time. And it's just what Bishop Tipton just gave us, you know, the latest update on it. That would that describes where the community is at the moment and it and we could actually, there's a policy that that Dave just talked about in terms of with his mother and whatnot that wasn't followed, but there sounds like there's a policy in place. And so if we have an ER doctor that's running rogue on top of that thing, we need to talk about, maybe that's one of the things we drill down on, is that if you're going to have a contract at this hospital, these are the protocols. Any questions?
Right.
You know, just, you know, I, you know, I know they're doctors and they don't take directions sometimes, but the bottom line is if they're working for this county
Yep.
and they're working out of this hospital, then these are the protocols that we expect.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haas.
I want to thank Commissioner Hill for bringing this up because it's a very big deal. Now, I've been in the hospital. I was treated there. Why did, why did Dave have to specially go back in and ask about his mother? Why, you know, and other people don't don't have the ability to do that. And I'm glad that that she did get the Regeneron. I'm glad that she's doing better. I asked my doctor today, what's what's in it for me? I mean, where where is anything out there? The Regeneron, they couldn't get or wouldn't give to me. They could have, but they wouldn't give to me because I'd already, you know, been a week and a half in into this sickness. I'm not getting better anywhere fast. We're going to try some other approaches. It should be in the in today. And I'll find some other approaches to this, but we need to figure out what we're doing within this community. We've had far too many people die from it. We've had an awful lot of people that left here, went up to different other areas. They went to Idaho, they went to Utah. They got what they needed and within a few days they were doing very well. And that's all we're asking for here. And that's all the the public's asking for. I went in, got some fluids. They gave me some anti-diarrhea mess medicines and go home. And if it hadn't been for doctors in in Carson City that I normally go to, plus the acceptance by one of the doctors here at HGH, and he went along with the program and made sure that we got the medicine we needed, plus a lot of other things that have been out there, you know, to bring me through this, or I wouldn't be talking to you right now. So it is very, very important that we put our heads together and figure out, at least get some information out there. Now, Commissioner French, you mentioned that that you had available to you some information about who was vaccinated, who wasn't vaccinated. We've actually asked that of the the of HGH and they've refused it. We've asked it of of Maher and they've refused to give us any information. How do you get yours?
The latest report that that came out of Stringham's that he sent to us actually listed those rough statistics that I that I quoted. I don't, I don't have any contact in the, you know, with anybody at HGH or anything along that line. And the only thing I fall back on is the data that was provided to me by either Nicole, Dr. Stringham or through HGH itself, which is Robin Dunkorst.
Do you, do you recall where that was? I haven't seen anything about the statistics as far as whether they were vaccinated or not vaccinated.
If you read down through the latest, the latest report that they sent us, if you read down through that report toward the tail end of it, it seems like that was where I I picked that up.
And who was the report by? Was it on?
It was Dr.
And then through Stringham?
I think so, yeah.
All right. I'll look again, but I haven't seen anything like that. Thank you.
You bet.
Well, I think where we are with this is we need to have that discussion about maybe pulling another, the health board back together and come up with specific questions. And maybe two, we'll have, need to have two more, couple of meetings, come up with specific questions and then
Yeah.
have HGH more involved involved in it.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chair and to Commissioner Haas, the email that Nicole sent out on 11/4, which would have been last Thursday, had the, it's called a memorandum to health board 1104, 1104. And it does break it down by vaccinated versus non-vaccinated, so.
Thank you, Dave. I'll look that back up and see what I missed. I appreciate that. Dave, I've got you. You're, while you're there, I have a water board meeting on Friday at 10:00. And that's usually two to three hours. Did you already set out the the meeting for Friday? And what time is it?
Well, it went out at 9:00 AM, yeah, and I think we set it for 8:30.
Okay, that'll work for me. Thank you.
Yeah, we we saw that that was on that date, so we tried to make it earlier.
All right, so the other future agenda item. If not, let's go back to public comment. Commissioner, did you address your your quick, you had and said what you were going to say during public comment? Is there any public out there that would like to make comment? Hearing none? We'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.